Mayor Barrett requests to introduce Superintendent Maureen Lynch and President Lane Glenn to give an update on the Woodya Vo-Tech project at Northern Essex Community College.
Mayor Barrett.
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you, councilors. As you are aware, we have been talking with nine of the communities involved in Woodya Vo-Tech, and we've reached a kind of a gentleman's agreement, or gentlewoman's agreement, to discuss what the next iteration of Woodya Vo-Tech would be. We know that we have an aging school where it is. We know that there's a possibility of being a shared campus model, which we are going to apply for. We'll be coming to you later, probably this spring, for schematic design approval funding. But right now, I just wanted to invite both Chancellor Glenn and Superintendent Lynch to kind of give you an update of where we are right now. We've been meeting pretty regularly, and it seems like there is hope of some kind of solution to both the problem of an aging building and a problem we had with the funding and people approving, spending the money. And hopefully, we spend a little less money, we have a better facility, don't have to pay for a lot of infrastructure that doesn't exist where the current Woodya Vo-Tech is. So there's multiple advantages to this combined pack campus. And I'll let the two bigwigs here.
Welcome Superintendent Lynch and President Glenn. Thank you for coming tonight.
Thank you.
We look forward to your presentation.
Bigwig, from the mayor, thank you. Thank you, President Sullivan, and members of the City Council for having us here tonight. Both Lane Glenn, President Glenn Glenn and I have been working really hard with our communities, with our own organizations, to try to find a path forward for Woodya Tech. And we're really excited about the possibilities that are happening right now. The last time I was here, you asked for some more information about Haverhill students. So I made sure the first few slides were about Haverhill students. So I wanted to show the Woodya Tech enrollment of Haverhill students at Woodya. So there's 856 students from Haverhill that make up out of the 1,285 students that attend Woodya Vo-Tech. Enrollment by CTE area, as you can see, we have 24 CTE areas. We have cut three of them due to low enrollment, and those are Design and Visual, Early Education and Care, and Construction Craft Labor. Construction Craft Labor was a new program this year, and unfortunately, they only had a draw of two students. So we are looking at combining some of our resources, also while thinking about a possible building project as we move forward. Co-op employers, I always think this is important because our charter is to make sure that students are able to go to work when they graduate. So many of our students are out on co-op. That begins at the middle of their junior year through their senior year, and these are some of the, this is a list of some of the co-op employers that are here in Haverhill. So we are providing the workforce for this region. Something we're really proud of is that our co-op placement, we have one of the strongest co-op placements in the state for regional vocational schools. So our students are off to work and working, and again, providing that economy for our region. So here, we get to talk about the actual building project and what we've been working on together. So as you can see, there's a rising demand for career and vocational technical education. There's huge financial challenges. I don't need to tell you about buildings, projects right now, and MSBA. It increased on early college. This past year, we had 160 students going through the early college program. We used to have it at Woodya Tech, but because of this possible project together, we asked that, you know, our students actually go onto campus, and it's been very successful. The kids have really enjoyed it and have really gotten a sense of what a college community could look like. And then also, they're looking at a growing need for a skilled workforce. If you've ever had to try to hire a plumber or an electrician right now, it's very difficult. So we're here to provide, to have that need. So benefits of a new Woodya Tech, it guarantees a future for Woodya Tech. Last year, when the building project failed, we all were in a situation of, what are we going to do? And this will, you know, have Woodya Tech for generations to come. Looking at increased enrollment, I know Counselor Jordan has said, you know, I want increased enrollment for Haverhill students. And that's something that, as we move forward, we can definitely look at. It creates a new model. It's really exciting, actually, to have discussions about what this could look like. It's the first of its kind in our state and maybe nationally. So President Glenn and I are going to visit a few places throughout the country to try to get a sense of what this might look like, but really, what we're saying is, this might be something that really is truly innovative throughout our country. You want to jump in on the next one?
We're real tag team at this point. It's been a great pleasure working with the superintendent on this project. So President Sullivan, members of the council, thanks for having us here tonight. The college has been more than just a willing, but an eager partner in all this for the reasons that the superintendent has explained here. Our hope, our anticipation, is that, as the superintendent mentioned, done well, this can, at the same time, save money for the cities and towns participating and provide more seats and a even more expansive access to early college, to the CTE classes involved. Where we've been with this, if we can shift to the next slide there to potential cost savings. Last summer, we formed a group to work with the Donahue Institute to explore, first, the vision for what such a thing might look like, and then secondarily, operationally, how might this save money? How might we address the workforce needs and all those kinds of things? We brought in big-picture thinkers for this, from Jobs for the Future, from the Harvard Project on Workforce Development, from Mass Inc., you know, organizations that do a lot in this space, not just in New England, but all across the country, to help us look at good practice models and also think through, in terms of our labor market, right? The Donahue Institute had recently completed a new labor market blueprint specifically for the northeast part of Massachusetts. We want to be in tune with the needs, you know, today and as far as we can into the future for the next few years. So our hope, and you're looking there at the overview, sort of aerial view of the campus, there's a corner up on the upper right there that is undeveloped, that would be probably prime for this kind of project and would answer a few, both concerns and possibilities that we've been exploring, right? So how do you ensure that freshmen and sophomore high school students have a freshman and sophomore experience and, as needed, are secure and in a separate part of the campus, that sort of thing? While at the same time, providing for shared spaces, as the superintendent mentioned, we've already been doing a fair amount of that, right? 100-plus kids already integrated with our student population. So utilizing some existing space, the college just finished a space utilization study with Jones Architecture that pointed towards some very specific places around the campus that could be used for a project like this. And at the same time, our hope is that this opens up new avenues for additional funding sources, higher ed capital, higher ed operations, foundation support, federal earmark support. We're pursuing all these different avenues right now. If we could advance the slide, please. These are a few of those things that I just mentioned. The governor has proposed something called the Bright Act. Maybe you've seen it in the news. It would be a $2.5 billion capital bond bill specifically for higher education in the state. The last time this was done was during the Patrick administration. That was a $1 billion bond bill. It went a long way. This will go further. And there are sections within the Bright Act, should it pass, that are specifically devoted to projects like this, collaborations between vocational, or just career and technical education, I'm working on it, high schools and colleges like Northern Essex. So that's one additional avenue, we hope, for funding support. We're also in conversation with Mass Development about the existing site and, you know, what might be able to happen with the existing site that could reduce the cost to cities and towns and so forth. Can you move the slide ahead, please? Whoever's operating that. There we go. Oh, there we go. That's where we're at. Superintendent mentioned this would be an innovative model, not just in Massachusetts, but nationally. Indeed, the closest thing we've found so far, doing a scan across the country, in Colorado, there's a place called the Sturm Collaborative Campus. It is a collaboration among Colorado State University, Arapahoe Community College, and the local school district. Not as integrated as we think this model could be, and here's what I mean by that. Would you advance the slide, please? Keep going, please. A little farther, please. Perfect. On the left of this slide, what you see is a scenario in which Woodya Tech and Northern Essex occupy adjacent pieces of property, sit next to each other, and operate separately. That's not where we're going. There's not a lot of cost savings in that. There's not a lot of additional funding available for that. It's not a model that funders are particularly interested in, but in the array of possibilities, it's a possibility, right? Figure out how to apportion some land, set Woodya Tech up over there. The next column you see there, two schools, shared space and services. We've begun to do some of this already. This involves figuring out with the Department of Capital Asset Management and Maintenance, our property is owned by the state, Woodya's property, of course, is owned by the municipalities, figuring out with DCAM how to either long-term land lease this thing or section off a piece of the land, whatever it is, and then share some modest services, security, you know, janitorial services, maintenance, these kinds of things, right? That's sort of a modest approach. As we've worked with both that visioning group I mentioned and the municipal working groups, town managers, all of whom will be present at tomorrow's meeting, by the way, all 11 communities, we're really angling more toward this third column, right? Two schools with a shared identity. You can imagine a Woodya Tech and a Northern Essex operating as Essex Polytechnic or something like that, right? An umbrella identity and much more integrated with one another programmatically, staff-wise, opportunities for any student and family who wants to, to participate in early college, and at the same time, plenty of opportunities for apprenticeships and direct-from-high-school workforce credentials to meaningfully engage people in the workforce. That last column over there is preserved for some future in which perhaps these two schools actually merge. We're not talking about that today. We wanted to show the full range of possibilities here. You know, there are other parts of the world where this polytechnic model does sort of bridge what we call the high school experience into the early post-secondary experience. Doesn't happen so much in the United States, but it's possible, and that's what we're sort of looking at here. Last couple of things to point toward here, if you'll advance a little bit farther, please. Yeah, a little more. There's some detail on this slide presentation we'll leave with you. Out of respect for your time tonight, I want to go through all these details, but there's a timeline in here that has shown you from last summer when we started working with the Donahue Institute through key milestones, such as the Mass School Building Authority in December, providing its permission for us to get a little farther into this process. You want to talk about the last thing we need to do before we go farther? Hand it back over to you.
Sure. As you know, MSBA has the requirement that we have all 11 communities sign off that they are in favor of us moving forward together. They want us to not only look at Northern Essex Community College, but they also want us to look at our own campus. And then the cost of the feasibility study will be solely on the district, and I think that that's it. So those are things that we need to have. We're hoping by May, the deadline for us is July 1st. If we don't get those things, and all 11 towns don't sign on, all 11 cities and towns don't sign on to that, then we will not be able to move forward into eligibility. So it's really important that all 11 towns, cities and towns are in favor of us moving forward together.
Thank you. We do have councilors with questions. Vice President Jordan, no, I'm sorry, Counselor Mitchison, you were first.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. And, well, I think this will be great for the city of Haverhill and the region. I fully support moving forward with determining the cost, the feasibility, and the improved education, career training, job, and economic development outcomes, which I think you can affect in a very positive way, and of course, savings for the taxpayer, which is very I think that, again, this is an excellent opportunity to continue to explore it, and I'm not sure that you completely covered the timeline for when we're going to get, let's say, the feasibility study and the cost.
So if we, if all cities and towns agree, our actual eligibility period will begin in August, on August 1st, and then I believe it's 270 days of eligibility. So we would be looking at a feasibility study, I think, beginning probably in June of next year.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments.
I do have a few more.
In a slide presentation. He has his own.
And hopefully...
I've known Counselor Mitchison a while. I would have guessed.
And hopefully, you'll be thanking me after these comments as well. I think that the prospects of increasing vocational seats at Woodya Vo-Tech is huge, and also possibly Northern Essex, maybe some blend there. So that'll help give kids, you know, an opportunity to, you know, go down the career path that they'd like. We do have some complexities with that now. There are many great initiatives that are already in place to build upon, such as high school students earning college credits and summer classes at Woodya Vo-Tech, to name a few. But I do have some questions and some suggestions on the way forward. So what I think is really important is to extend the scope of the proposal, to include partnerships, you know, across a student's continuum, right? To include, you know, middle schools, the high school, nonprofits, and other stakeholders, as well as deeper interaction with industry. So even though the focus is on, you know, building for your two organizations, right, the big picture for the students is bigger than that, and you can be the engine to really make that all happen so that it's a smoother transition, you know, from middle school to work down the road. And I've got a quote here from the Donahue Report that I think shows the complexities and the challenges from a policy standpoint that you're up against, and you, of course, you both know that completely. You've been down the road a few times. But I think, and here's the quote in the report. "I think a shared campus with Northern Essex is a wonderful idea, but it's also really scary for administrators of the cities and towns and schools in terms of how attractive that's going to be to a greater number of students who are looking at wanting a vocational technical education." To me, that's not a problem, but I do understand the complexity of it. And this is the important thing. It's also opening a lot of avenues to them, and the schools are already struggling at trying to keep students in their district. We've got to break that somehow, or not break it, but evolve somehow through policy changes. It really needs to be kid-focused. What's the best path for each kid? Not necessarily being driven by the bureaucracies, you know, of all the players. And I think, for that reason, that was a really good quote in that report. And a more integrated model with all stakeholders and a student's learning and career path is needed that puts students ahead of systems and bureaucracies. That's basically the general point that I think is important. You're not going to move all of those different organizations into the same location, but you really need to establish those partnerships to make it work. And just a note that a voluntary career exploration, training, and internship matching algorithm is under development that includes all the stakeholders, and I want to thank all of the organizations here for participating in that. We've had several meetings right here. That'll be voluntary, but hopefully, you know, maybe it'll be a useful tool. And then the last point, I believe that even more potential funding sources can be leveraged if you are strongly tied to economic development. You could be the engine for the future for Haverhill. You know, making Haverhill a world-class, workforce-ready hub is exactly what industry wants. You know, I've been out talking to industry, that's the number-one problem. Not all the fancy AI stuff that's out there, that's coming down the road, but that's very important. You already answered my question about utilization, because I'm told that there, the classroom utilization is at some percentage less than 100% at Northern Essex today.
Yes, enrollment, of course, is climbing, thanks to free college.
Yes.
And we also have opportunities of subdividing some classrooms. We have some that are larger than they need to be, so we have some opportunity there to create even more space for what we're doing here.
Yeah, so I think that looks very hopeful. And then finally, just so we don't forget about Haverhill High School, right? We need a shuttle between Haverhill High and the new campus, right? We all have to work together, and so let's not forget about them. And thank you very much for listening to me, and I'm all for it, and let's make it happen. Thank you, Mr. President.
Counselor Bezalier.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Glenn, if I could please direct your attention to what would be page nine of this, and it's in, the title is "Potential Cost Savings and Funding Sources," but sir, my question is in regards to the picture, and specifically, is that large swath of wooded land that would basically be southeast of the Student Park and Lot, is that owned in large part by the Commonwealth?
South southeast, you're looking...
So if we're looking at the Student Park and Lot, sir...
The biggest portion of trees up on the west.
Yes, yes, that's it.
Is that what you're asking about?
Yes, it is. Okay, and is that where you were talking about the new building, sir?
There's also a portion that you can't quite see in the frame there, but yes, up in that direction.
Okay, about how many acres does the Commonwealth own that would be available for this project?
I think we scoped it out at 14 of the nearly 30 acres you're looking at there.
Okay.
And the original project would have been on eight.
Okay.
So there's plenty of space up there.
Plenty of space, good. And I'm going to ask a very obvious kind of sophomoric question, but obviously, if we were going to move forward on this, the fact that this land is owned by the Commonwealth, would that result in a savings, right? There's not something I'm missing here? It's land we wouldn't have to buy?
That's one of the features of this project.
Great, all right. Thank you, sir. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counselor. Vice President Jordan.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Superintendent Lynch. Thank you, President Glenn, for the presentation. It's very exciting. I had the opportunity to speak with President Glenn on Friday, and again, it's obviously the early stages. There's a lot of details to be sorted through, but the potential for this, I think, is fantastic. You know, I think you've done a good job articulating that, you know, this would be new and maybe revolutionary, not just for, you know, the state of Massachusetts, but for the country. You know, I think the great point by Counselor Mitchison, that the focus really needs to be about what's best for the students, not what is best for the 11 cities and towns, school districts, and getting more money to that district. It really needs to be driven by what's best for the students. I really like the fact that you're building on existing relationships that you already have, you know, great success, you know, between Woodya Tech and Northern Essex, for that matter, Haverhill High and Northern Essex, over the years. So this is just building on it even more so. We all know about the tremendous need that we have for a lot of industries, for some of the jobs that we don't, we're not getting enough people into the trades as it is, and again, we know that there are lots of kids that want to get into Woodya Tech from Haverhill right now that aren't. So the thought of this new combined, you know, project, having more seats means more of the Haverhill kids that are currently trying to get into Woodya and aren't getting in, would be getting in. That's very, very exciting for me. And I think you did a great job of talking about the potential cost savings, you know? So obviously, I think there's a big part of the reason why, you know, Haverhill obviously supported the project, but the other cities and towns didn't. And if you can get cost savings through the number of ways you laid out, from, you know, the land itself to, you know, tapping into various different sources that Woodya Tech couldn't alone by itself, but now you're tapping into bigger, I mean, it just seems like it could be win-win-win on every level. So I fully support this. I think the city of Haverhill will be fully supportive of it, and I certainly hope that all the 11 cities and towns will be, because from my conversation with, again, President Glenn, the next step is just, we want to learn more about it. Why wouldn't you want to learn more about where this could actually be going? So I fully hope that all 11 cities and towns want to at least find out what that can be, because it certainly seems like it'll be beneficial, again, to the students coming from all these cities and towns. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, sir. Counselor Tuohy.
That would be Counselor Rogers, I believe.
Counselor Rogers.
I have a quick question. Thank you for everything, your presentation. I just want to clarify that by the end of May, you have to have all 11 towns signed off on kind of going forward with this. What's the outlook of that?
I think right now, it looks good. I mean, I know, you know, we have some, a couple that are just, we're trying to bring along, but I think the outlook is good.
And they all want to stay somewhat involved. Nobody wants to get out or any of that. We don't have that.
Not yet.
Okay, that's good. No, I just wanted to know what the outlook, thank you very much. That's all I have, a quick question.
Counselor Tuohy now.
Yeah, I'll be brief. Thank you for the presentation. I just had a question that was brought up. What the impact, if any, if this goes forward? What's your opinion on the potential lottery? We talk about it more in increased enrollment for Haverhill students. What would be the impact if, in fact, excuse me, that all 11 agree? What happens? Is that guaranteed more students, more Haverhill students?
Counselor Tuohy, that is a loaded question.
Could you come closer to the...
That is a loaded question. We are still trying to figure that out. What, because right now, the regional agreement does not have an allotment. So, you know, we just base on scores, and the numbers are the numbers. So we're going to have to work through what a lottery would do and for seat allotment. And I'm still puzzled by it. So, you know, the thing is, the state is having a one-size-fits-all, right? And we all have our own regional agreements, so it's going to be complicated.
Thank you for that. And lastly, to piggyback a little bit on Counselor Rogers, I don't want to mention any communities, but what, in your opinion, what's the big, what seems to be the biggest obstacle? I think it's going to be challenging, to say the least, to get everyone on board. What do you see is the potential biggest, I don't know, reason, if you will, that a community is not going to be on board? Do you know the answer to that question? Do you want to share that?
Yes, we do.
Go ahead.
All right. Let's try a diplomatic approach here.
Sure.
All 11 of these communities have different interests and different things that they're worried about, right? I mean, every community, all 351 in the Commonwealth at this point, are concerned about what might happen to Medicaid this year and all those kinds of things. That is alongside the other things they were concerned about before that, right? So money, first and foremost, right? However many kids a particular community was sending, some of these communities' budgets are stretched so far that anything is going to be burdensome, right? So one of the things that I, for my part in this, have been trying to do is seek as many avenues as possible to reduce that cost to every city and town, to get the money thing less oppressive, right?
Sure.
On top of that, you know, there are ideological interests. Certain communities send more kids, they feel, to colleges, universities directly, you know, maybe more selective ones, whereas other communities, you know, may have more of a mix of that, and they feel differently about whether they might need a vocational school at all, even though they know they need plumbers. All right? Let's be real.
Yeah.
I think we've got this to a place, and I'm looking in both directions now, where, as of today, 10 of the 11 of these communities are feeling better about collaborating around what we just talked about, and the 11th is coming to visit with us tomorrow. So, you know, can I come back to you next time?
Of course.
And give you more details?
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Hobbs Everett.
That was my question.
Okay, you're all set. Counselor Ferreira.
Thank you. Logistically speaking here, for this process, what is coming down the pike to the 11 communities in the near future really is funding for feasibility, correct? So that would be shared between the 11 communities as it stands now?
Yes, and as well as we have some funds in our stabilization account that we are hoping to also add to that. Our biggest concern right now is our wastewater treatment plant, and we have hired an OPM. We're doing a big test during April vacation, so when I come back for the budget, I'll hopefully be able to tell you a little bit more about where we're at with that. But our hope is, you know, we're cognizant of taxpayer money... But our hope is, you know, we're cognizant of taxpayer money and how everything is so hard right now. And we don't want to put funds into a wastewater treatment plant and then be, you know, planning on a building project. So if we can repair, that's absolutely what we're gonna do. But we also have to stay open for at least, I think, at least five to seven years. So, you know, we're in a little bit of a spot, but we're gonna do the very best we can to Band-Aid it as much as we can so that we can keep ourselves running and be good stewards of the taxpayers.
Thank you. And then just one.
Counselor, the first thing you'll probably see is an appropriation for the schematic design, which will be, we have to appropriate it to agree to do it, and that has to be done very shortly.
Feasibility.
Yeah, feasibility, yeah. So, you know, that will be in the next weeks or so.
Probably next year.
I thought we had to do it by June this year.
We have to agree.
Oh, we have to agree to do it. Oh, we don't have to do it, okay.
Yes.
It's the agreeing, that's the hard part.
Yes.
So my next question is, since this is becoming potentially a newer model, and we have 11 communities, some of which may not wanna hang in there for the long haul of it, is there an out once you are in at this point? So if you are one of these communities and you're like, yeah, sure, I'll play, we'll sign off, we'll see what happens, we'll do the feasibility, and we'll see what happens, does this change the agreement in the future for those communities to then say like, actually, this is not what we think is gonna be great for our town, and to come out? Does it change our charter agreement, I guess, in the long run?
It probably will.
For communities. It will probably, last meeting, we kind of got on to the fact that it'll probably be a legislative change, rather than us trying to hash it out amongst ourselves. And we won't agree to the change unless we're gonna move forward with this probably combined campus, because otherwise, you know, you have that same problem that you had at that old site. With the new, you know, it still has a lot of issues at that site, at the VOTech site. So this is an opportunity to save everybody money, to have the infrastructure available to tap into, to have the land available, to have some savings in the size of the campus and the use of campus. But that's not the first thing we're gonna do. That's gonna be a little further down the line. Make sure we can get to where we need to be.
Thank you.
You all set, Counselor?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. I don't see any of the lights on. I'll just throw in my two cents that I do think this project is too important to fail. It's the most innovative and creative proposal I've ever seen coming for education, for public education in my lifetime. And I think its time has come. If we can have cost efficiencies, plus a nice campus for two different schools that will blend together and work together, it's really a no-brainer, but unfortunately, it is so complicated that it's gonna take some major brain power to make it happen, so good luck to both of you. We support you, we definitely support you, and we'll be doing anything we can to try to help make this a reality. Thank you all for coming tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Very much.